Hello Akushnet, today is Tuesday, May 26th. And this is a meeting of the Akushnet Board of Selectmen. As you can tell by your screen, we're all in multiple locations, meeting remotely. Continue to meet remotely. I don't know how long this is going to continue, but for a while it seems. So first item of business on the agenda, we've got some minutes of the meeting dated March 16. As I read those minutes, feels like when we got all the town hall employees together to to discuss the fact that that it wasn't going to be business as usual for long and that we had something coming and we needed to adjust to that. And those minutes really talk about that. And we declared the state of emergency in the town of Akushnet at that time. So gentlemen, if you've had a chance to review the minutes, could I get a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of March 16, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Pass? Under Old Business, first issue under Old Businesses, COVID update. Why don't we do this first? Because this is, this is on the agenda under COVID update is the town meeting change discussion. And a town meeting is presently scheduled for the 21st, 22nd, Monday, May 22nd. And we're talking about moving it back to Saturday, May 20th. And I don't remember exactly what the issue with the Monday was, but why don't we talk about that as well?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
You're saying, you're saying May 20th, it's June 20th.
I'm June. Thank you. My apologies. June 20th. It was originally going to be June 22nd, and we're talking about moving it back to June 20th. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can. So this discussion came up, we had a department head meeting last week. And kind of talking through all of the options. If we're allowed at that point to even have a town meeting, what would work best for us, you know, including the capacity of the buildings and things like that. Somebody brought up a Saturday meeting, and actually, I guess a lot of towns are considering this. Because for us, the biggest area that we can put people in to have them spread out is the school. It seems like it's the location that we currently have town meeting every year. But the school is still running, even though the students aren't at the school, there are still employees who are there. And so having it on the Monday night might cause a little bit of difficulty in terms of making sure we can have it cleaned and sanitized. Where there are employees who work there every day of the week. Saturday was brought up as an option so that maybe we can facilitate the disinfecting better. And maybe we would have a better potential of bringing more people to town meeting where, you know, after work on a Monday might be difficult. And we know it's, it's probably going to be a hard year anyway with all the pandemic. So that's why Saturday was brought up as a discussion. Some other discussion that we had also involved having an outdoor town meeting. And there were some people who helped put together some figures for what that would cost. And it seems like an outdoor town meeting might have more issues than benefits. Obviously, looking outdoors is helpful for, you know, outdoors better than indoors for the pandemic for being able to air out the space. But obviously, it brings a lot of other issues, one being the weather. You know, it's a big one. I know Pam had brought up, she has to bring everybody in and make sure they're registered when they come to town meeting. Or for the election in that, in the same manner. And there would be difficulties kind of corralling everybody. So I think at the end of our discussion, and it's ultimately up to the board, but it seemed like having it in that indoor venue where we always have it would be the best idea, but maybe moving it to a Saturday would be a little bit better for the facility at the school.
Can I go to Mr. Gomes and the Town Clerk, Mr. LeWonty, to find out if that date's going to work for the two of them, Saturday, June 20th? Thoughts on that? Mr. Gomes, why don't we have you go first?
Yes, Saturday, June 20th is a satisfactory date for my calendar. I do agree that public participation on the weekend and putting it on the Saturday may be helpful. I just want to make sure that it is clear to everyone that they know what date it is, especially because some people might have already put the 22nd in their calendar. I'd want to make sure that notice goes out. My concerns are the safety, our population, the primary, the elderly, and the voting stock of the town. I want to make sure that, and we need to build confidence in our residents that we are taking this serious. We have the precautions handled. Everyone's going to come in with a mask. If someone for whatever reason was to come, I wouldn't want to turn someone away from their democratic right to participate. I think we should have masks handy, even if it's just the single dollar temporary one that can be thrown out afterwards. Making sure myself, my staff, I would urge the wearing of gloves. Our actual runners and counters, I want to make sure that they are safe. Myself, I haven't had any symptoms, no issues in that regard. Certainly wasn't traveling to China. So I've cleared all of the hurdles, you could say, as far as my participation being in the public, being in the court, that's no longer an issue for me. So it's a matter of just focusing on that day execution and making sure it's safe. I don't know if I'm going out too far here, but if I could have the podium secured where someone is able to speak without fear of droplets going to someone sitting on the side of them, just proper spacing between seating. Making sure we can fit the quorum in the room and then some, so that everyone gets their right to vote. So in a long-winded way, yes, the 20th does work. And my last thought is, have we received any guidance from representatives or the governor's office at all regarding town meeting in general? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomes. Let's go to Mr. LeWonty first, and then we'll go back to Ms. Hebert. Mr. LeWonty, how's that, how's that date look? We haven't talked time of day either, so why don't, why don't we talk about time of day as well? And then we'll go to Ms. Hebert.
The 20th is fine, fine for me. We've done a Saturday town meeting previously. As I mentioned at the department head meeting today, I do not anticipate that we'll have a large turnout. Even if it is on a Saturday. I just, I know how difficult it is on a regular basis to get a quorum. So I, I'm not expecting that there's going to be a huge turnout. I would like to do our check-in table. Oh, yep, go ahead.
I was gonna say, Mr. DeRoche, go ahead, finish, Mr. LeWonty.
Yeah.
I would, I would like to possibly do our check-in tables outside. Which logistically, I'm not sure how I would make that work.
Outside, outside, or outside the auditorium?
Outside the auditor, outside, outside.
Outside, outside, okay.
But that depends on what location we use. If we use the middle pool, we'll do it the way we would normally. But if we were to use the elementary gymnasium, that would free up some of the additional space inside. That was just a thought.
Let me go to Mr. DeRoche. Time, it's time of day.
Right, well, that's my question. That's my question.
We haven't talked time at all. So I don't know if, you know, what the pleasure of the board is, what would be more convenient for the moderator? Do we do a 10 a.m.? Do we do, you know, a 1? I wouldn't want to do it late on a Saturday.
No. No.
Early, I think early after, early afternoon, I don't know, it's just, it's time of year where people want to enjoy their day. And so maybe, maybe it's better to do it first thing in the day.
Well, I think the town meeting might be condensed, at least for this town meeting this year. You know, I'm open to 10 a.m. I see very few, there's a number of articles that are kind of stocked together that we always agree upon. And, you know, I only see two or three articles so far that could go into some discussion or debate. So, you know, 10 a.m., we could wrap it up, or we could assume to wrap it up earlier than later.
10 works for me.
10? Mr. Gomes, 10 a.m. sound all right with you?
Yes, 10 a.m. will work for me, and I believe it is a good idea as well.
Mr. Casper, how does 10 a.m. sound for you?
10 a.m. sounds fine with me, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I think that this board is going to be discussing the protocols for town meeting, what we should be doing, all depending on the quorums that we're looking for and things of that nature with Ms. Hebert later on in the meeting. With some articles that Mr. Blake has given us reference to. So we, if we, the board and Jeff Blake, our town council determines that if certain things were struck off the warrant as far as articles go, that we could say it'd be non-controversial. We could go down to a smaller, smaller quorum as of eight people. So at that point, we could probably be in and out of that door in a half an hour, 45 minutes, because we're providing a streamlined budget this year with a lot of cuts. Some may argue detrimental, but we have to do what we have to do to provide a balanced budget as best we can with the shortfalls in revenue. So we'll have that discussion later on, but for 10 o'clock, Saturday morning. I think you get it done earlier in the morning. The heat is going to play a factor. There's no air conditioning there. So I think if we get in there by 10 o'clock, if we can get out of there by 11 o'clock, I think we'll be doing all right.
Let me go to Mr. Korea, the health agent, and just, you know, talked about having this meeting at the, at the school auditorium. I mean, could we get some guidance early on as to what we should be thinking? I'm picturing it in the Ford Middle School Auditorium. I think that's the bigger room. I think so where we'd want to be, but maybe if we could ahead of time, think about what the standards are going to be for having that meeting. Things we, things we should be thinking about. Mr. Gomes expressed some, some thoughts. I mean, we could get some guidelines from you, maybe, you know, early, early, help us plan for this.
Yeah, I spent some time on it today. Me and Jim got the building plans. We looked at, we've got the building plans in regards to the auditorium and the cafeteria, or the gymnasium in the cafeteria. I spent a considerable amount of time actually making some sort of determination on what the capacity could be based on proper social distancing. And that is something that you guys should know, because about the maximum capacity in there, plus or minus a little bit, maybe Pam setting up outside in the hallway to check people in, is about 80. And that includes the, that includes the finance committee, you know, the select board. You know, that's inclusive of everybody, the cameraman.
So it'd have to be a huge town meeting for it to be a problem for us, basically?
So yeah, I mean, if you're, if you were looking for a quorum of 70 people, you might have a problem. But if the legislation comes through and you're able to reduce it, you'll be in good shape.
I think we're hard pressed to get, you know, 80, 80 people at a town meeting most of the time, especially one where it's not controversial. Like, how, how are you going to fill the whole, the two rooms with chairs? Or what are you, what are you picturing?
So the thought process is here, it's also about the proposed public hearings that have to be held too. So the thought would be to go in there and set this up, basically set it up for what it would be for the town meeting. And then from that point on, be able to use, utilize it for all the different potential public hearings that are coming up. And it would just stay set up. Yes, essentially, it works out to be, you know, rows, 10 rows of seven chairs. So once that was all set up, they, because again, you have to remember your aisles, you need to be somewhat, you need to be basically 12 to 13 feet away. The chairs need to be away from that in the aisles, the rows, they can be six feet apart, more or less. But any of that traveling where people are going to be moving in and out. You get, get that bigger space. But again, 70 people, roughly 70 people in the audience. I say that because again, we don't, we don't know where the cameramen are going to be. Potentially, like Mr. Gomes said, the podium, where we're going to put the podium, so that might, you know, shuffle around a few spaces. But, and then figure about 10 to 11 people, some on the stage, some below, right below the stage. And still leaving enough room in there to move about, we'll give you the 80. Once it's set up, then we just start banging out all these, these public hearings, the Board of Appeals, the, the planning board. We can set this up, I think, pretty much as as soon as the select board would like, and then leave it at that.
Right, I, you know, it'd be nice if you could give us a, you know, one page bullet pointed, you know, this is, and we can, we can certainly copy that and distribute it as needed for for anybody setting up, anybody participating in this meeting that, you know, the staff at the school that need to, you know, set up the room. You know, give them, give them the guidelines. So if we could get that, that would be helpful.
Yep.
I think we're, I'm pointing at people, you don't know who I'm pointing at, because it's probably different on every screen, right? Mr. LeWonty, are we good? Anything else with that that you want to weigh in on, or? Commuted.
We can't hear you.
Can't hear yourself.
I, I said my piece already today at the department head meeting, and Jim and Joe have taken the lead on making sure that the size of the room will be appropriate for what we need. So but I would like to stay on because I do need to participate in the public meeting portion.
Mr. Gomes, I think we're good with you. If you're all set, I know you've got something at 6 o'clock you need to be to. You're welcome to stay. You can jump off whenever, whenever you're ready, though, okay?
Okay, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. Have a great one now.
Good night.
Thank you. Ms. Hebert, any, anything to add on that? I'll go to you next, Mr. DeRoche. Ms. Hebert, anything to add on the public meeting or town meeting?
I'm good. I'll, I'll make sure that we have our reverse 911 sent out. So, you know, I know, Mr. Gomes, you brought up a good point of notice. So we'll make sure that we can send out our reverse 911 to let everybody know about the, the date and time change. We'll put it on the website. And hopefully everyone will get that update. And obviously, we'll be posting it without, you know, via our regular notices for town meeting, but.
Thank you. Mr. DeRoche, I'm sorry.
I was, I was, my only question was, do we have to vote to confirm that it's June 20th?
Yeah, probably, probably not a bad idea. Could I get a motion to change the town meeting date to Saturday, June 20th at 10 a.m.?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And we've also got, want to do public hearings discussion, or do we sort of do that? That's on the agenda as well. We, are we good with that?
Um, no, I think we should discuss that. So.
Mr. Young, Mr. Young's here as well, so.
Um, so in general, this is something, it's come up with various boards. You know, obviously, public hearings are a part of everyday life for a lot of the boards that we have. And they've all been put on hold as of right now. The selectmen have voted to hold off on any public hearings unless they were related to a town meeting article. So I think, I know Henry is looking for some guidance in relation to how we can have a public hearing, whether we can do virtual public hearings. Or if we can figure out a physical space like Joe was talking about for public hearings. So I think that's one piece. And then the second piece would be, you know, do we allow, do we open it up again and start allowing people to have the public hearings that they're looking for? As everything is kind of reopening.
Let's go to Mr. Young. Mr. Young, any comments on, on the topic? Anything you'd want to share?
Sure, I would echo everything Julie said, but you know, at this point, we're, we're, you know, focused on the public hearings which are preemptive for the bylaw amendments. The public hearing is preemptive to the actual vote at town meeting. And, you know, we have a advertising deadline that we're bumping up against. We have to submit to the paper Wednesday. So we just need clarity on, should we do virtual public hearing on the 18th of June? Or should we have a live public hearing at the school? We can do, we can go either way. I just need a definitive, you know, direction from Board of Selectmen.
We, we had a, Julie and I, I believe both of us, right, with, with Attorney Blake from Copeland and Page last week talking about this topic. And he, you know, basically indicated it was fine to have a virtual meeting like this for a hearing. He did, he did caution that, you know, you needed to be, anticipate what your crowd would be. And you needed to make sure that anyone that wanted to weigh in had the ability to weigh in, that we didn't want, you know, objections after the fact that somebody that wanted to participate didn't have the ability to communicate via Zoom or, or whatever, that, that we made sure it was, you know, it was, it was, it was accessible to anybody that wanted to participate. Suggest that we avoid controversial topics. And we've, you know, we've got a couple of those in town that, you know, the last public hearing that we had in the, in the Ford Middle School Auditorium, we had 150 plus people in the room. I don't, I don't think, Mr. Korea just told us we can't have one of those. So I think if you've got, you know, any, any topic that's gonna pull a bigger crowd, you know, I don't, I don't, you can't, you can't do it live and you can't do it virtual, because I don't think this, I don't think this, this works well for, you know, a lot of people that want to weigh in, spread across multiple pages of the screen. I've, I've done Zooms with as many as 40 people. And, you know, once you jump onto the second screen, it just doesn't work as well. So you know, I guess my opinion would be, you know, fine to do them virtually. Provided you can, you can reach out to everybody you think should be participating, that they get the opportunity to participate. And you avoid, you know, any, anything that would be a controversial topic. I don't, I don't think you want to do virtual.
Okay.
So anything to add to that? I'm sorry, go, go, Mr. Young.
Uh, so I concur with everything you said. Currently, there are three zoning bylaw amendments that are still on the warrant. Two of which have state or federal mandates tied to them. The other one, the third one, the which is referred to as the Upland Circle bylaw amendment, could be dropped. It's not an absolute requirement that it be held, or the vote be taken at the spring town meeting. So if we just stick with the floodplain overlay district and the stormwater bylaw, those are not controversial really whatsoever. They're mandates from state or federal government. So coming full circle and seeking clarity from the Board of Selectmen, would it be the intent, it is my recommendation, to drop the Upland Circle bylaw amendment off the warrant?
Can I go to Mr. DeRoche? Had his hand up?
Well, I believe I watched your, your meeting, planning board meeting last, and you mentioned June 18th, you were going to have public hearings.
Correct.
We also have the article for the common driveway. That we, so that, that's one that, you know, right now I'm okay with, but you mentioned the Upland Circle, I'm okay with dropping that one at this time. I feel that it would be better served to have it in the fall or the next town meeting, the half-town meeting that we're discussing for the future. Last week, Mr. Cabral brought up a lot of comments on the verbiage of the bylaw, and I'd like a little bit better clarification for that. And the fact that we can have just eight people deciding a bylaw change is not, I don't think prudent for the town. So.
Hit those comments to Mr. Merritt. I edited the, the article, proposed edits to the article and sent them to Mr. Merritt, and he did accept those changes. So but I agree, if it's controversial in any way, and it's not urgent, I think we, we need to pull it off the warrant.
Right.
Anything that's controversial in any way, we need, we need to get off the warrant.
My only comment is if we want to keep, you know, Mr. Young mentioned the other two, you know, bylaws that need to be, or the articles that need to be there. And my only comment is article, is it 12, I believe, concerning the common driveways. I'm okay with that one. If, you know, we can discuss this later in the meeting. But in general, I'm along with what Henry is saying.
Yeah, at the, at the last planning board meeting, we dropped the common drive bylaw.
Oh, all right.
You dropped it? What does that mean? You're not going to, you're not going to pursue it?
We're not going to pursue it. We're going to hold it off until the fall. And I recommend, I recommend we do the same thing with the Upland Circle. That would leave only two zoning bylaw amendments, one which is a floodplain overlay district and one is a stormwater bylaw amendment.
Which we gotta, we gotta do both of those. We're totally.
We have to do those two.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Casper.
So I'm glad Mr. Young's come to that conclusion, because, I mean, you can look at any zoning bylaw change controversial, right? And I think Mr. Young recognizes that. The Upland Circle, I, I'm fortunate to have people that know development, and Henry and I haven't had an opportunity to speak on that. We've talked about it way probably a couple of years back when Jim Merritt first introduced it. That, I got some serious problems with that Upland Circle touching the front lot line. I can explain it some other time, seeing how, I think the board's in agreement that we're all going to drop it. So I guess that may be a future meeting that we discuss with Mr. Young, at least Mr. DeRoche and I, and Mr. Cabral, you know, running for reelection, but it is something that we need to vet out a little bit better, because I don't think that that Upland Circle makes good sense in its written form. It excludes people that have lots that are only buildable in the back and not buildable in the front. And if you use the Upland Circle, it says you have to touch the front lot line, which is going to stop me that owns five acres from building on the rear two acres of Uplands. Henry, is that correct?
That is correct.
So this, that, that bylaw doesn't make any sense. It's going to outrage a lot of people. So I wasn't moving, I wasn't in, in any way, shape, or form, ready to put that on town meeting floor. I'm glad Henry came tonight and said the same thing. I think Mr. Merritt's probably going to be in agreement as well, that it needs to be vetted a lot better. This, this is the kind of discussion I was talking about, with these kind of things that we bring in, Henry Young and maybe Jim Merritt, and we have some vetting time with these individuals, so people can see it. Things can be brought to our attention as Board of Selectmen, there's maybe good reasons why it should be passed or not, but I've had numerous people in my ears saying this is a bad idea overall. And I understand the circumstances after I've read it. I, I know that there's been circumstances in the past that would have precluded these lots from being developed. So I think it's just a bad idea overall. So Henry's, Henry's willing to drop the common driveway law. Henry, you back?
Yes.
So even the common, even the common driveway for the public hearing, Henry, I think that would be a little controversial, because you're stripping away the distance that you put a common driveway from an existing dwelling, and that could be a little controversial now, because now you could be within 25 feet of a border.
Right.
So that's, I think that needs a little bit of tweaking as well. So I commend you in just saying, you know what, we can wait. I've talked to Julie about this next town meeting for articles. Once we can have a bigger public forum, maybe late August, we can do something like this and get somebody zoning bylaws through, and a couple of other things, house cleaning articles we need to do before school starts. So, you know, we'll be talking about that in the near future, Mr. Young, about a, maybe a late August town meeting.
That sounds good. I'm in complete agreement.
Anything else, Mr. Young?
That's all.
As far as, Roger, as far as his regular public hearings go, are we making any policy towards normal public hearings? So the planning board, if they have to review site plans and, and just plans in general with people to have these public meetings, those are all public meetings where, you know, butters need to be located of certain things, criteria that's taking place on development. I think we need, I, I'm not so sure that the virtual public meetings are a good idea. Joe Korea just said we can get 80 people, and he didn't mention whether those 80 people were in the elementary school area where we're going to have the election, or was that in the Ford School that Mr. Cabral mentioned, Mr. Korea?
This is all Ford.
That's all Ford.
And the way that I see it is we set it up now for what would be potentially the town meeting, and we allow, because it, it, it would be socially distanced, it would be set up, we basically could get started with having those public hearings, you know, on-site instead of virtually.
So I mean, with that said, I mean, if we're going to do that, I would, I would suggest, I would suggest, I would suggest that public hearings be held at the Ford Middle School, as Mr. Korea alluded to. It'll be all set up, everybody can attend. Henry will tell you that most of his planning board public hearings, he probably gets 20, 30 people, nowhere near 80 people. So I think for planning board purposes, even Board of Health, Mr. Korea could speak on that. Public hearings for Board of Health are limited to maybe a dozen, maybe a little bit more, a little bit less, not a big deal. I don't think that this, I think that this is something we can do live and in person. Sooner or later, we got to come out of our cave. I think this is an opportunity for everybody to come out. Keep it in mind, we're going to social distance, we're going to do, wear masks. If somebody comes to the podium, maybe we have plexiglass around the microphone. Whatever it may be, I'm sure that we can make this work live and in person.
Mr. DeRoche, and then I'll go to you, Ms. LeWonty.
Well, my, my comment is, my, my comment is to Pam. Last week, we were discussing about the elementary school being the place where we're going to have the the election and the town meeting. the election and the town meeting.
That was, that was my recommendation, but Joe and Jim don't seem to feel that that's, there's enough room there. So that's the option for the Ford Middle School.
Okay.
It was, if, if I might, um, we looked at both of them and it's definitely a smaller capacity in the elementary school, although we could make that work, it would be a significantly less amount of people. But what we did is we looked at it, or what we did is we looked at it from, you know, the potential of the town meeting. Uh, and if we're gonna have the town meeting, the ideal spot would be at the Ford Middle School. If we're gonna go through the effort to set it up, we set it up once and then at that point you use it for everything. Um, throughout the summertime until the school comes into play again, and then we'll have to hopefully readjust and we'll have some other answers.
But that may be a problem. Have you spoken with the school regarding?
Yeah, school needs to be on board.
Right. And have you spoken to them about any potential summer programs that they might have to hold at the middle school and they might need that space?
Not so much the middle, well, yeah, the Ford Middle School. Um, uh, yeah, well, we're, this was, you know, we've been talking about that for, since Friday. I mean, really trying to move forward and get this done because we have to have these public hearings and we have to have it safely. Um, and yeah, we've talked, the school's been in on our, um, department head meetings. They're aware of what's going on. I think from the selectmen standpoint, what you guys have to think about is, um, you know, the money that might be involved in, in cleaning this space after it's done, potentially over time, that might be involved with the, um, the custodians. And we'd have to take a look at, you know, also, we should, everybody should be looking at the times on what would be convenient. We still got a little bit, the schools are on board, they know what we're doing. Um, but they, they also know we have to clean it.
I realize that the schools, we've been discussing it at the department head meetings, but nothing in the department head meetings that I remember mentioned leaving this set up for future meetings.
Yep.
Keeping it in place.
Right. Right now, the school's closed. I don't see that, I don't see anything happening with the schools until, um, you know, almost the end of June at this point in regards to what they can and cannot do. They're open, um, for their staff. So that's who we're looking to protect. But over the course of, you know, the next month or so, maybe get some of these public hearings done. And then take a look at it at that point coming into August or coming into July.
Well, who's concerned about public hearings? I mean, I know the planning board has a number of public hearings for June 18th, and then we have the town meeting two days later. So are there other public meetings that need to happen before then? Is that what you're saying or?
The zoning Board of Appeals has a meeting scheduled right now for June 9.
Well, then wouldn't they follow the protocols established by the governor or, or what's been established?
The recommendation.
For public hearings and not have one?
Yeah, the recommendation was made. Right now they have, I believe she said seven cases that need to be heard and that does not include New England Fams, which is a new case, um, for the center of town.
Right, right, right.
I would suggest that's an example of one you need to, you need to have live and, uh, probably gonna bring a lot of people out to, to participate in that. And I, I, um, you know, that may be one you want to push off for a little while and, and that's not me commenting anyway, in any way on the project. I'm looking forward to that project. But, you know, I think that's one that could bring a lot of people into the school beyond the, beyond the 80 person capacity. So I think you need to, and I don't think that one works well as a Zoom meeting either. So I think you gotta figure out how to deal with something like that. And the best way may be to just, you know, to, to kick it out to have the date.
As a reminder, they've pushed that one out to July, but they still have the other seven meetings. So in other words, the longer we keep pushing it out, the more cases that we're getting.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gasper, go.
If Mr. If Mr. Young and the planning board has already, um, scheduled, uh, you know, you know, temporarily preliminary scheduled June 18th, two days prior to town meeting, and then we're gonna have town meeting. So that, that window is two days. We know that's a known right now. My recommendation, if I can make a recommendation to, uh, Ms. Labonte, Ms. Hebert, and, and the board and Mr. Korea is this. If the, if we have concerns still about the pandemic and so if we, we should, we should work with ZBA to say, you need to schedule your public hearings if, if the, the 20th is town meeting, correct?
Yeah.
The 18th, Mr. Young's two days earlier. So then we tell ZBA, you're, you can have, you can hold a public hearing, but it's gotta be in this window of dates so that we're only going in there for like a one week period of time. We're gonna occupy that space. We go in, we cleanse it, we do everything we need to do. We're good to go. It's a one week timeframe. By then we'll be in the third phase of the governor's reopening. We'll see what it looks like then. We can kick, we can get some of the ZBA things because they do have some, some applicants that they need to take care of that have been postponed. So if they can do four or five in one night and have a two hour meeting, two and a half hour meeting, so be it. Planning board goes in a couple of days after that. They do their stormwater and floodplain one. The done and over with. That one shouldn't be too bad. Um, now that we've done some vetting as a board of selectmen on that stormwater, um, bylaw. Um, and, and we move forward. And if the Board of Health has anything that they need to do, they can schedule in that same week of window of opportunity and let's see what we can get done. And we'll reassess in the June 20th area of what we, what we got done in that one week window, we can bang out a lot of public hearings.
Mr. Korea, no, no issue with having public hearings?
If, uh, if we can stick to what we're, what we're looking at right here in regards to the way the access in, the access out, the bathrooms, the cleaning and setting this up this way, then there's, there's, there would be no issues and it's, it's gotta get done, you know? I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna get really backlogged if something doesn't happen.
Right.
Going to Mr. Mr. Deroche next.
Well, with the planning board, uh, already set for June 18th, could that be the, the first public hearing we try to accept? And then two days later, we have a town meeting. And then the following week, we would have a good understanding of how the school's going, how we establish protocol for the people coming and going and have the ZBA, have the, you know, whoever else needs to have public hearings after that. You're talking about a week timeframe, you know, start with the 18th and see how that rolls. You know, there are many variables still involved. We don't know how this coronavirus is still gonna go, you know? It's going in a good direction right now, which is very promising. So, uh, you know, they can bounce around a little bit, but I think we're all in general agreement on, on how we should proceed with this.
I, I think that, that both the ZBA and the zoning Board of Appeals need clear direction from the Board of Selectmen to say, this is when we can start having public hearings, um, because it's putting them in an awkward position as well as putting the individuals that are waiting to have projects completed.
And I'm supposed to, I'm sorry, but conservation too.
Oh, conservation as well.
Thank you, Ms. Lina. Thank you.
Right, my, Mr. Chairman. Just a, a quick thing. I think, I, again, as soon as we can set up the schools, we'll tidy up some loose end with the, with, with, with the school about being able to do it. They are aware of the fact that we're working towards this. Get that facility, work it out with the school, with the school. Get the facility set up, the chairs set, the people in place, the desks in place. Um, you know, the lines on the floor in place. The sooner we can do that, we work on it, you know, essentially this week if the school's okay with it. Then at that point in time, you know, as long as everybody knows their public hearings over the next two months, we'll say, I mean, there's, there's a good possibility we can go right into the beginning of August. We'll just, we'll work it out with the schools, but everybody's public hearing is gonna be held at the school.
We want to pick a date for the first public hearing. Do we want to open a window? When, when does the window open?
Well, I, I, I think that's what Pam's asking for the zoning Board of Appeals and the conservation. Um, my question would be, are we still under the guidelines that we're, you know, that we have right now? And how long are those guidelines gonna last?
Well, that's, that's the element of doubt right now. The governor's just gonna come out on June 8th and say what his second phase is. We don't know, we, mind readers, I, I hope that it's a lot better than his first phase. I mean, again, I'll talk about it again. I can go to Home Depot and buy a two by four, but I can't go to JCPenney or Coles and buy a T-shirt. Really? I mean, this doesn't make any sense. So let's figure it out. And social distancing is everything as far as the Board of Health and the, and the Department of Public Health. So we have guidelines established. We don't know what's going on. I think we need to let Henry know that, yes, he can have his public hearings for June 18th. Um, that if we, if the Board of Selectmen want to say that's the start date of public hearings and then we're gonna have town meeting two days after, it gives us one day to get in there and cleanse. I think the fire department bought some special equipment to go in and sanitize for COVID-19. Has that been ordered and in?
We have it.
Oh, yeah. It's been ordering, but, um, I'll have to check with the chief. It's been on backlog from months.
And then, so then you need a 20, you need a net, you need a following day for somebody to go in, clean the tables, clean the chairs, whatever, whatever's in there. So you're gonna have to skip a day in between public hearings and then maybe for the following weekend, we allow conservation and ZBA to start conducting meetings for the following weekend. We can discuss that. ZBA don't, doesn't have the requirement that Mr. Young has, the 14 day notification. He has to post it two different places. So we allow planning right now to do the June 18th meeting for stormwater in the floodplain only. All right, Henry, you okay with that?
Yeah.
You're on mute, Henry. And then, and then we do the, the town meeting on, on Saturday. We gotta, we gotta go in on Monday or whatever and clean up everything again because of the public was inside the building. By that time, we'll already have another meeting after June 8th. We'll know what the governor's saying. We'll see what kind of guidelines he releases, new guidelines, and Mr. Korea can work with the Board of Selectmen um, in the, in the town administrator on developing maybe a new protocol for, for public hearings. We don't know that. And so
Is June 18th even, June 18th may or may not even be possible. Is that fair to say? Or we're waiting to see what the governor says on June 8th. June 9th might be good for public meetings.
If we're having the public meeting, I mean, if we have a town meeting two days later.
Yeah.
You know, June 18th sounds pretty dual.
Let's go to Ms. Labonte, then Mr. Korea. Ms. Labonte, had your hand up.
Thank you. I'm sorry, but Selectmen Gaspar, the, um, ZBA is under the same advertising requirements as the planning board. That they have to have it in the newspaper two weeks prior, um, two times prior to the meeting. They need at least a three week leave, leeway.
Everybody does.
Right, right.
Well, then we're already passed if they need to go June 9th.
They've already, well, they already advertised. So they, because they didn't know what the board was gonna decide. They didn't know what the governor was doing. So they did go ahead and they did their advertising so that hopefully they could hold the hearings on the 9th.
Well, why? I would just ask this question. Why would you do, why would you go out and advertise when you're not sure what you can do and what you can't do?
Because some of these cases were continued. And if you don't continue it properly and you cancel it and reschedule it, then you have to start the process all over again.
Okay, I understand that.
So it was an effort to save the town and, and the petitioners' money.
Go to Mr. Korea, had his hand up, and then Mr. Deroche. Mr. Korea first?
Yeah, I just want you to know that one of the orders, which was the continuing operation of essential services in the Commonwealth, um, uh, closing of certain workplaces and prohibiting gathering, gathering of more than 10. That order, which is the COVID-19 order number 13, is the specific order that says you can't have gatherings of more than 10 people. Well, what it does exempt is municipal gatherings. So technically, a municipality can have this kind of meeting. All right. The reality of the situation is, again, a town meeting, such as a town meeting, it can have. Um, but the other hiccup, you know, that's here is the simple fact that it's hard to bypass socially at this point, bypass the six foot of distance or, or the, the social distancing. So that being said, coming up with a plan at the Ford Middle School in regards to the people and being able to do that immediately is fine. That's, we don't need to wait until phase two. We don't need to do that. We can, we can do this social distancing. We can make sure that we set it up right. As soon as we get, get a good plan in place to make sure it's cleansed. And we can begin doing this, you know, as soon as, again, as soon as the 14 days are up or as soon as the advertising is and postings are done.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Deroche, Mr. Gasper, you good with that? Should we, uh, begin to allow public hearings as, as soon as possible? It sounds like what I'm hearing, provided we've got the appropriate protocols in place, we're cleaning up after every meeting, we're distancing, we're provided we can get the, the, the auditorium at the Ford Middle School set up appropriately, we're ready to go with public hearings tomorrow.
I, I would say, I would say if ZBA already advertised and spent the money for advertising and they're scheduled for June 9th, well, then they're the first ones. Let them be the ones to kick it off. And then, but I think the board has to say, hey, we're, we're not just gonna let everybody keep continuing doing public hearings, you know, every week, every other day, just because we're allowed to do it. We're gonna allow the ZBA to hold their public hearings on June 9th. We're gonna allow the planning board to do a public hearing on June 18th. We're gonna allow town meeting to be held on June 20th. And if anybody else has any other need, conservation, ZBA, again, planning board, all they have to do is submit a letter of request to the Board of Selectmen and give us a date on when they plan on having it. And at that point, the Board of Selectmen will have better guidelines from the governor's office on where we're at. Mr. Korea can work with the Board of Selectmen and say, yep, now we can do it this way. We don't have to follow that rule anymore. We continue to follow the same rules. We'll have better guidelines to establish off. Mr. Korea.
It sounds like, it sounds like what Mr. Korea said is we're, we're not, not arguing what you're saying. I, I, that's, that sounds like a fair plan, but it sounds like what Mr. Korea is saying is we could let everybody have a public hearing whenever they want to have a public hearing based on what we've got from the governor. So we don't have to do that, but it feels like if we wanted to just say, you know, have your public hearing, you know, I think it's appropriate to have some plan and to get on the calendar and to make sure we've got enough downtime between meetings that we can get the room under control again.
Correct, correct.
It's, um, so to have people send a letter to the Board of Selectmen and say, this is what I'm thinking, feels like that would be appropriate.
Correct. That's, that's all, that's all I'm trying to say. Mr. Korea made, Mr. Korea made the case. And Ms. Labonte made the point of the ZBA already making, uh, the advertisements along with Mr. Young needs to do it by tomorrow. Let's just do it. We'll learn something from June 9th. Um, you know, I don't think a lot of people are gonna be banging through the doors for ZBA meetings, but let's see what happens. We'll, we'll, it'll be a test. And then we'll be able to make adjustments for the next one, which is planning board and then town meeting. We should be ready to go.
Mr. Let me go to Mr. Deroche first. Ms. Labonte first. Mr. Deroche, had your hand up?
Uh, yeah, I just, it came across me that we also are gonna propose having the Keating hearing on June 9th. Is that correct?
That's the next date for it, yeah.
Is that gonna be at COA or is it gonna be at the school? Because if we're having both, there we go.
And it's, by the way, it's five, speaking of that, it's, it's eight minutes of six, so.
Kevin, you have to go.
You have to go.
I, I have my alarm clock set for me when I have to leave.
Okay, so we've, we've got, yeah, the Keating, the Keating hearings is, is June 9th. And, you know, we had talked about potentially doing that virtually as a Zoom meeting, but this meeting, we've gone in another direction that I hadn't anticipated we were gonna go in. Uh, Mr. Young. I'm sorry, Mr. Korea.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make one note for you too, Mr. Gasper, if you hadn't over there. Um, one of the thoughts is that we shouldn't do public hearings at the, at, or, or public hearings at the COA because that is certainly our most susceptible, you know, our, our residents that go there. And that whole cleaning and the concern behind that is, is probably not appropriate. Whereas we know that the younger kids, you know, it can affect them. I'm not saying that it doesn't, but it doesn't affect them in the same way that the older population gets affected.
I, I go to Ms. Labonte first and then Ms. Ms. Hebert. I'm sorry, Ms. Labonte, Ms. Hebert.
Please go to.
You're all set. All right, Ms. Hebert, then Mr. Gaspar, Ms. Hebert.
I have to leave.
Yeah, okay.
What we were discussing with PJ Keating was doing the virtual meeting, um, because we had concluded the public, um, the public discussion portion of the hearing. So unlike other large controversial public hearings that we're saying you should push off, um, we, we have been pushing off PJ Keating for that reason, but in talking to town council, um, the public discussion period had ended on the, um, public hearing. So ultimately you could have a virtual hearing for that. You could allow people to join in, but ultimately you could have everybody muted because the public comment section would be over. And then it would be between the selectmen to just have their discussion and their vote on the, on the land use license.
Okay, I'm gonna, let's, let's recess now because Mr. Gaspar needs to run and it needs to be there for 6 o'clock.
I have to, Mr. Chairman, I have to, we have to make a decision on whether or not it's gonna be virtually or not, because I got a reading here for the notice. It says the PJ Keating.
All right, yeah, good point.
The public hearing.
I think we should do it virtually. I think we can do it virtually. We can do it like a selectmen's meeting.
We did, well, the public comment sex time that we did, Roger was already there. We've listened to most of what we need to listen to to make a determination. We got more facts in front of us. We have a good soil board permit now. Now it's all about now. Now it's all about the land use license. That's all the public hearing is for. I think it's just for the Board of Selectmen to have some discussion, um, on whether or not we're gonna allow it, whether we're gonna allow it with conditions or whether we're gonna disapprove it and for whatever reasons for, all right? So that's up for the Board of Selectmen. I, I vote, um, that we do it virtually.
I do too. Mr. Mr. Deroche?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
So I'm going off to read a letter, if it's okay for you, General, that the PJ Keating Public Hearing Schedule for May 26, 2020 at 6:00 PM has been continued to Tuesday, June 9, 2020 at 6:00 PM. The continued hearing will be conducted virtually. The call and information can be found at the town's website at www.cushnet.mass.us. Is that fine, gentlemen?
Sounds good to me. And we'll continue at this point, we'll continue at this point when you come back. We're gonna take a, um.
Do you want to give the appointment?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Can we edit this out? I need, I need five minutes.
Yeah, all right. Why don't we, why don't we take a break? Why don't we cut the camera right now? Let's go on break. We took a, a 10, 15-minute break. Uh, Mr. Gaspar had to go post a notice on the Council on Aging. We're supposed to be having the PJ Keating, Keating hearing tonight, but, uh, you know, because of the current circumstances, uh, we've kicked out the date for that hearing till, uh, June 9th. And, uh, Mr. Gaspar just went down to the Council on Aging to, uh, read, uh, to the, to the masses assembled there, uh, the fact that the hearing was, was gonna be, uh, was gonna be postponed again. Was nobody, truthfully, there was no, there was nobody there, but that was a process we had to go through. So the, the, the meeting will be June 9th. And that is the next topic for discussion, uh, for the meeting tonight is, um, is what we're gonna do with regard to that hearing, how we're gonna hold it. Mr. Young, and to answer your question, I, I think we're all set. I don't think there's anything else we need you here for. So you are welcome to stay on, um, if you'd like, but you can certainly, certainly jump off. I think, I think we're good with you. Anything comes up. And Labonte, same, same thing. Uh, oh, you've got, no, actually, you've got it, you're, you're, uh, you've got something on the agenda. We'll take yours next out of order.
Dr.?
Yep, Ms. Labonte, we're gonna take yours. We've got something, we've got a vote for you. We'll take that out of order.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If, if I could, would miss, before Mr. Young takes off, um, Henry, we, we got the budgets and the articles in front of us to discuss again. And I mentioned the cut, um, due to COVID-19, you are $11,000 from the Board of Selectmen's budget, um, as special project manager. I, I don't know if this is, if this is where the chairman will allow you, but if you would like to stay for that conversation, um, you know, it is a proposed cut in the, in the Board of Selectmen's budget. And the reason why I did it is because I don't see any special projects that we're gonna be doing in the current year. So if you'd wanna stay on until we get to the budgets, that's fine. If, if you, if the chairman wants to allow you to speak on that one cut right now, that'd be fine too, in my eyes.
I didn't know, I didn't know we were doing that. I thought we could, I didn't know we were doing that tonight, but that's, that's fine. All right, we're, that's some chaos now. Ms. Labonte, go ahead.
I just wanna verify, I don't remember you voting on June 9th being the beginning of the hearings. I just wanna make sure that that, I'm gonna tell the ZBA they can go ahead and with their hearing.
Uh, June 9th, actually, I.
Not in the location, excuse me, Mr. Not in the location that they said.
That's, that's correct, but we can.
We've got the PJ Keating hearing on June 9th. We're gonna do that virtually.
So, Ms. Labonte, what you're saying is they've advertised, but now their advertisement's null and void because the location's not the same?
They can amend the location. They can amend it.
In the timeframe that's required?
Yes, yes. It's just like the 48-hour open meeting law. If you add something to the agenda after, within the 48 hours, it's still covered.
But didn't they post, didn't they advertise the public hearing to be here at the town hall meeting room?
They did, they did. But we can get that amended.
The advertisement?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion, I make a motion to allow the zoning Board of Appeals to conduct their public hearings on June 9th at the Ford Middle School.
Only.
Only.
Okay.
Mr. Deroche, second on that?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
And I make a motion, and I make a motion to allow the Planning Board to hold their, um, public hearing on June 18th as proposed by Mr. Young.
Second, Mr. Deroche?
I'll second, at the Ford Middle School, I'll second that.
That's correct.
All right. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, I, I do wanna resolve, before we get into the budget, which is, which is our, um, our next topic, I do wanna resolve the, uh, the next public hearing on the, on the PJ Keating and how we're gonna do that. So, so that is, that is scheduled for June 9th. It's been postponed at least two times. We may have postponed it three times. I don't, I don't, the original hearing was when, back, back in March, something like that. Um, it was supposed to be tonight. This was at least the, at least the second, maybe the third continuance of that date. So we've now got a date of, we've now got a date of June 9th. Um, you know, we talked about, we pretty much exhausted, uh, we let any, anybody that was in that room that night that wanted to say anything, we let them speak. We, uh, we set no time limit on the hearing. Anybody that wanted to go to the microphone had the opportunity to go to the microphone. We didn't cut anybody short. We let them go. And, um, I can't, I, I don't believe there's any need for any additional public comment. So for that reason, I think that, you know, we'll certainly publicize the public hearing, but I think that we would, um, close off public comment pretty quickly and begin to deliberate on, on the land use license and what that land use license is gonna look like. I think, uh, we, we need to try to move that forward. Um, you know, likewise, also on the agenda today, soil, the Soil Board Permit is, has not been voted by the Board of Selectmen. And sort of Port, Soil Board Permit remains, uh, remains a topic for discussion also on the agenda for tonight. But, um, let's talk about first, um, the, the June 9th meeting and whether you're all comfortable doing that via Zoom like this.
I think you voted, I think you voted that already.
Did we?
Yes, I have in my notes here, discuss, vote to do virtual. Um, Kevin did that and Dave seconded.
All right, then it's, then it's done. Okay, so.
The land use permit.
Land use permit, correct. And that is the topic. Ms. Hebert?
Um, and, and I just wanna clarify, because I, I feel like we're going all over the place a little bit.
We are, yes, we are.
So I know you, you voted to approve the, um, public hearings that were already listed and voted. Um, and is it okay to say in general, I, I think Mr. Gaspar brought this up, but again, to clarify, if anyone needs a public hearing, to send a letter to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Selectmen will okay it, um, so that at that point, they can post it, the hearing and move forward. Because I think, um, and you, you, um, alluded to this earlier, Mr. Cabral, um, we're looking at, um, public hearings that we know are going to not be controversial in the sense that they're gonna be bringing in large groups of people, um, both virtually and in person. I think we've all, you know, said that that will be very hard to manage. Um, so if people are writing a letter into the selectmen, you'll be able to make that determination if it's going to be highly controversial and should be held off until whatever phase we hit where, um, you know, we can accommodate it. So just clarifying, is that what the Board of Selectmen is looking to do?
Yes, I believe that was the, what we discussed. Correct, General?
It is, it is, Mr. Jim, and that's exactly the intent of tonight. We, we given the ZBA, um, permission to do it, Henry Young, the Planning Board permission to do it, then we have town meeting. And if anybody needs to do anything in between now and then, they're gonna have to give us notice and the reasons why they need to hold those public hearings. And then at the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, we can make a determination of whether or not we're gonna allow that to occur.
But to both, to both, a message to both the ZBA and the Planning Board, both, I think, is if you've got it, if you've got a topic that you believe is going to be controversial, that you believe is gonna pull more than 80 people into the Ford Middle School, um, that probably should be deferred, even though it is ZBA, a Planning Board, probably not a good idea to try to host an event like that.
Correct.
All right, so, uh, let's, let's go back to, and I know we've jumped around reopening plans and, uh, protocols.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Deroche.
Can I just follow through with Mr. Gaspar's request to Henry Young, if he'd like to make any comments and leave this meeting or, you know, because.
But.
You know.
Are we on the budget? Are we on the budget discussion or?
Well, is there, okay, no, we're not, we're not. Mr. Gaspar.
Just, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get through this. And, and I see that's, that's first up in the next session in the.
Okay.
You know, we have budget on the agenda, but I'd like to finish up in the current session because some of that, some of that affects Mr. Korea, who's, who's also hanging on. So trying to, trying to deal with the people that we've got on the, on the screen, but, um, just trying to do it in some logical order. Um, so we've got, under COVID updates, we've got reopening plans, new protocols, and there were a couple of documents that were, uh, distributed, Ms. Hebert, uh, regarding the Council on Aging and the library. Uh, but I think in general, you know, we need a plan to get, get back to business as normal, uh, certainly, uh, you know, mindful of our employees, but, um, you know, there are, there are functions in this town that I think should be operating, and we need to figure out a way to get operating. Or I'll make the next comment that, you know, given, given the budget challenges we've got, and I, you know, I saw one of the budgets that was proposed and I, I'll, you know, won't name, but, you know, part of the plan is to, is, you know, there's, there's a, there's 40 hours a week to pay people to stay at home. And, you know, we've been doing that for six weeks. And I think eventually we get to the point where if we're paying people to stay at home, then we need to start talking about furloughs of employees. And I, I think that's the next logical step. If we're dealing with budget challenges, and we know we're dealing with budget challenges, that, that we shouldn't be paying people to stay at home. We should say, you know, if, if we, if we don't need them in their department, if we don't need them to work, then maybe it's time to start looking at furloughs. And I, I don't know when that happens, but we're already six, seven, eight weeks into this. We've been paying people to stay home. I think if we're looking forward another four weeks, six weeks, eight weeks, whatever we're looking forward, then I think we need to consider doing things differently, and that may involve furloughing employees. And I don't wanna do that, but that's the reality of, of the situation we're in. We're, we're cutting our budget to the bone. We're talking about other cuts. I think that's gotta be, that's gotta be on the table. Um, so, uh, so let's, so with, with that, uh.
That's a change of heart, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm, I think I'm having a heart attack right now.
Well, it's, it's a lovely, it's a lovely segue into, it's, it's the reality of where we are. And it's a lovely segue into, uh, you know, the reopening plan. But I think if, if we can't reopen soon, then I think we need to have that conversation. I.
I agree.
And I open the conversation, and I open the conversation. Mr. Deroche?
Well, I just asked Julie if there's been any comment from the DPW. Last week I mentioned, you know, I was, uh, interested in seeing what their plans were and, um, if they had made any comments about how they're gonna reopen since they're essential people and essential people were considered in Phase One of the reopening.
This, um, I didn't get a chance to talk to Dan. He's actually on vacation through the end of last week, um, and the beginning of this week. So.
We gave everybody two weeks, so.
We encouraged, we encouraged everyone to do that. So that's, for you, Dan, that's all right.
Um, but I did talk to Joe a little bit, and Joe, I don't know if, if you wanna take over from here, but Joe and I did discuss the DPW, um, and what their reopening would look like. Um, but as of right now, you know, from a border health standpoint, it seems like they're, we should continue the way that, um, they're currently running, at least for the time being.
Hmm. Is that Phase Two? Is that what we're thinking now? Till there's been an established Phase Two? Or are we thinking Phase Three or Phase, or has it, are we still discussing? Is that, is that what I'm trying to say?
Still discussing. Um, but I know, you know, obviously Phase One is the phase that's been implemented. Um, and so as far as Phase One goes, there, there is no change for the DPW from a border health standpoint. Um, and in general, I know you guys received the library and the COA, their reopening plans, um, as they currently have them. I'm working on a plan. I've talked to Joe. Um, we'll be working back and forth to get a plan in place. Um, obviously, everything is ever evolving with the governor and what he comes out with. So, you know, you start working on one thing and then something else comes out. So, um, it's, it's been difficult. Yeah, I know Joe and I are both in that, in that same page, but, um, um, you know, we're, we're working on getting a generic plan that will work, um, for everything going forward. And as the stages kind of progress, then we'll be able to plan ahead and, and know where we are.
Well, I would be interested in seeing what they have to say because other departments are coming in. Like you said, the COA has already established a reopening plan as well as the library. So I'd like to see something from the DPW in the, just to get an understanding of what they're gonna do.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gaspar, go.
I, I, I'm getting dizzy and nauseated looking at the governor's stages of planned reopening. And, and I think Mr. Korea will agree that a lot of it, even though maybe he won't do it publicly, but a lot of it doesn't make sense anymore. So they have social distancing, six feet apart, wearing masks, but yet they say office capacity is 25%. So if I have a 200-square-foot room and I normally have eight people in that office, I can have two people in that office. If I have the same, if I only have two employees in that room, that same amount of square footage, I can only have one employee in that room. Does that make any damn sense to you on where the governor's plans and these reopening phases are going? Absolutely not. It makes no sense. Social distancing is what Dr. Burks, Dr. Fauci, and everybody else says, but yet we do reopening plans based on some frivolous theory that doesn't make any sense to anybody, and you can't make heads or tails of any of it anymore. So, look, I, I, I did see the plans from Julie that she sent from Gina and, and Heather. Great work, everybody that put, had input into that work. However, I said it earlier on, I, I'm mostly concerned with the library because it really truly is a public facility where you have non-residents going in and out of that facility. You have books that are being handled from people from multiple towns that use the books and bringing them back, and they establish some guidelines with that. I, I would look at library and council on agents are most vulnerable, as Mr. Hebert, as um, um, Mr. Korea alluded to. I'm not, and I don't think we're in any kind of an emergency to open up council on agent. I, I would, I would defer that until June 8th again, when we get the next phase. I'm in no rush to open up a library or council on agent. I, I am in agreement with Mr. Cabral's statement. I always had that same mindset is, we need to open up town hall and provide services, and that's what we're gonna do. Um, we need to figure town hall out. I think council on agent and library can wait one or two more weeks. As far as, you know, Mr. Korea's given his input, as far as our employees go, is DPW essential service. I think that the Board of Selectmen need to work with the Board of Health and say, look, you know, we, we've been on a split plan. Is it gonna hurt us to stay on a split plan for another week or two? I don't believe so. I would ask Ms. Hebert to put a, a good definitive plan to get town open, up and functioning for our public to come in and pay bills and do business the way they need to do bills, instead of everybody playing peek-a-boo through a drive-through window. Let's figure this out. It, I mean, you look at other things that are going on around town hall and government employees. Come on, there's so many places that are open and hundreds of people being packed into these places. Home Depot's the biggest one, I can say. And we can't open up town hall and have six people waiting in line, six feet apart? I mean, what are we saying about our residents? Like, we don't know what six feet is, so let's get a plan. I'm asking Ms. Hebert, I talked to her this afternoon, please get us, the Board of Selectmen a plan to move swiftly and promptly to open up town hall. I, I'm really, I have reservations of opening up council on agent in the library in the next week by June 1st. So I think it's a non-starter for me to even have any more reopening discussions until we get one for town hall.
Well, Mr. Gaspar.
Go, Mr. Deroche.
Uh, I agree with, with your comment. My question is, I'd just like the department heads to supply the Board of Selectmen with their reopening plans. So we have an understanding of how we can move forward from this point.
Yeah, I, I, I got it. And you know, but the problem with the Julie, Julia contest is, because I brought up the Julie today. So library already made comments of the substantial costs that could be associated with us opening up in a week from now, versus if we just wait until June 8th for the library and council on agent, maybe a lot of that criteria will be dropped and a lot of those costs will be dropped. I don't think it's fair to say, we're gonna spend 10 grand to open up a facility, but we're gonna have five customers come in. It's not a good, it's not a good use of money at that point. So I, a lot of this comes down to common sense. And I think common sense says, we've been closed for nine weeks. What the hell's two more weeks when it comes to our library and council on agent? And let's get a reopening plan for town hall where that's most of the businesses taking place. Books, people can go online and read a book. Council on Agent, most vulnerable part of our population. I don't wanna risk them right now. Town hall, people need to come in and stop paying the bills and get things done. Um, Jim Maris been doing it for a while. Joe Korea's been doing it as a border health agent. He's out there doing inspections all the time, accommodating the public. There's no reason why anybody else can't. There's ample room in these offices to have two people in each office with six feet social distances. Let's use common sense when we just, when we arrive to a reopening plan. That's all I ask.
Screen's frozen. Okay. I just, just went further. And I, I, I really got a point to, because I objected to the plan from the beginning with the Department of Public Works. I think the Department of Public Works needs to, needs to sooner rather than later, uh, get back to a normal shift and, and, uh, you know, and figure out a way to staff crews or whatever. But there is so much work that the Department of Public Works could do, uh, in two-man crews or three-man crews or whatever, uh, whether it's, you know, clearing brush or, or, you know, picking up trash or doing road repairs or doing small projects. It just seems, uh, it seems crazy that there's not a way that we could, uh, that they could not be back. that they could not be back to work being productive in the town of Acushnet and that we continue, we continue with the Department of Public Works, you know, to do this one week on, one week off. And, you know, happy that the recycling center's partly open, but I really don't understand why the, why the recycling center's not fully open. Um, you know, I went, I went by there a week ago when it had first opened and, and drove in. And, you know, it seems to be they've implemented, they've implemented the plan. There are cones everywhere, but, you know, when I drove in, there was, there was a young man sitting there, you know, receiving cars, didn't have a face mask on. So apparently he didn't get the memo. So it's nice to put rules in place, but I think we need to, we need to monitor and enforce those rules. But that said, I, I, I don't see a reason, to you next, Mr. Baroche. I don't see a reason why we, you know, we've got dumpsters there to receive cardboard and glass and, and metal products. I don't see a reason why we can't give the residents access to those facilities. But, you know, recycling center aside, I think, I think the DPW needs to sooner rather than later, you know, be, be back at work, because otherwise we're, I don't understand why we're paying them to be at home. Mr. Baroche, to you.
Well, I agree with you, Mr. Cabral. I'm 100% on this issue as it stands right now. We implemented a protocol that you and I didn't agree to, but we implemented it. And now we're into the different phases of reopening. So I definitely would like to see something from the DPW to tell us where they're headed and how they're gonna do it.
I, I, I agree with both of you gentlemen. I didn't, I didn't talk DPW. I said Town Hall, Council on Agent, and Library. I left, I meant DPW's part of the Town Hall employees because it is. So yeah, I agree with both of you gentlemen. Let's figure this out sooner rather than later. Keep it in mind that we, we, we want, look, I want to, at least I'll only speak for myself and you gentlemen can chime in. I think it's important that we work with Mr. Correa and the Board of Health moving forward.
I agree.
Agreed, agreed. All right, Soil Board Permit update. And I don't know where we were at this time last week. There was an email that went from Jeffrey Blake to the attorney representing PJ Keating outlining a number of issues that, that I shared with the board regarding things we'd like to see, you know, PJ Keating think about, for example, hours of operation and, you know, what hours of operation would they propose that weren't necessarily 24/7? So we did put that on PJ Keating to ask them to come back with, with that type of thing, you know, something I've been pushing for a while is a detailed decommissioning plan backed by a real bond. You know, want some, want some thoughts on that from PJ Keating? And these are things, we did get the Soil Board Permit from the Soil Board, but want to, want to, as a Board of Selectmen, we've talked about putting some additional conditions on that, on that Soil Board Permit. And I think, you know, the, the prime example of why additional conditions are necessary happened last, happened last Saturday or the Saturday before perhaps, when there was a jackhammer running at 6:15 in the morning. No response yet, as far as I know, from PJ Keating's attorney, but hopefully we'll have some of that response by the, by the public hearing on June 9th, because those are, you know, we, we'd like to put additional conditions in the Soil Board Permit, perhaps into the land use license as well. And it would be nice to give PJ Keating's the opportunity to comment on the things we're thinking about. And we've, we've given them that opportunity. And it's been probably 10 days and no response yet. So we'll see where that, we'll see where that goes. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman.
Anything else on the Soil Board Permit? Yeah, Mr. Gasper.
When, I did talk to Julie today about a couple of different ideas on, and she bounced them off Jeff Blake and he said he promised he'd get us some language on it. He thinks that we can, we can definitely do it as far as, and I said, "That's only Soil Board Permit." And she said, "Yes." So I think Ms. Hebert's gonna let you guys know a couple of things that I've thrown out there. But, you know, I've looked at yours. I'm, I'm in agreement. While I, while we're talking about it, I do have a question for Mr. Correa in his letter that we just cited, you just alluded to, Mr. Chairman, on when he cited it. And we sent him, "You are hereby ordered to refrain from making noise from 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM." And that goes to Mass. General Law, Chapter 111, Section 142B. Is that correct, Mr. Correa?
Yeah, so that, that's a regular, first off, we have that as part of the Soil Board Permit, which is the 310 CMR 700, which has to do with noise. That regulation is a Department of Environmental Protection regulation that gives, that, that whole section, that 710, 310 CMR 700, is all got to do with noise and air, noise and air, air pollution. Certain sections of that regulation are universal and therefore are allowed not only for the Department of Environmental Protection to enforce, but they allow the Board of Health to enforce too. And that was what we cited. That, that statute that it jumps over to is a direct statute with the Department of Environmental Protection that would ultimately be the one that would enforce with us that particular citing that we had, that 310 CMR, that regulation about the noise.
So my question, so my question, Mr. Correa, is this. Mr. Cabral and I have seemed to be in some, while we discuss Soil Board Permit issues, we seem to be in agreement about it, because in the bylaws it says we can regulate hours of operation. It seems like that Mass. General Law already does that. Is that correct? Is that a fair statement?
It essentially does, yep. There's a, there's that timeframe from 9:00 to 7:00 where, you know, you're, there's, the way it's written, there's domestic noises that aren't supposed to go, aren't supposed to happen. Certain domestic noises, lawnmowers and, and, you know.
Correct.
So yes, yes, it's essentially always been covered under that regulation without us necessarily writing it.
Okay, there's just.
Writing our own bylaw.
It's just something that they never abided to, then?
They've never really abided to it, no. And, and over the years prior, you know, however all of this came about, that was never really jumped on to. But as we've gone over those last two or three years and we've been working the permit and working the different regulations and the amount of effort that we've gone through, this is what we, we found out as we researched all this with our consultant and pulled it all in to make it all part of the permit to cover just about everything.
Okay, very good. I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that for Roger and my sake and Mr. Baroche's sake that we understand that that's, unless we want to take it a bit further, which I don't know if we will, but it already takes into effect that you cannot really load trucks after 9:00 PM or before 7:00 PM.
So, yeah, but it gets into, it gets into more. The one thing, and this I'll tell you so that you guys can do what you choose to do, is that there's a whole lot of, there's a whole scientific process that you kind of have to go through, which, you know, maybe will be the next level as we go in regards to what kind of noise or what is associated with certain types of noise. It doesn't necessarily mean that you can't make any noise. What it means is that there's a background noise, which of course is gonna be much quieter at night than it would be during the day. And then there's a certain decimal level above that that you're allowed to make. So we're all aware of the fact that this has never been tested and there is hope in the future that this will get done. It's a very expensive thing to do, but it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean no noise.
Do you, do you know what the threshold for decibels are? Because I do understand noise decibels. So do you know what that threshold is?
Off the top of my head, I believe it's, it's 10 decibels above the ambient noise.
That is correct. That is correct.
Yep.
And what is that considered to be, then?
So you have to test what the ambient noise is. So you have to, like, during the day, there's the traffic running in there, the crushers running. You know, the noise that's being made at PJ Keating would be the ambient noise and then that threshold above that. At nighttime, again, it would have to be debated. These are all very sticky things that would have to be debated. What time, you know, we, we start talking at 9:00. What's the noise level at 9:00? What's the noise level at 9:00 on a busy summer, summer evening versus, you know, a quiet Sunday evening or something to that effect? So you have to play all this out and ultimately come up with a baseline and then figure out how much noise they can make above that.
All right, so Roger, so basically, I think Roger, for our point of hours of operation, we still need to be looking at that because that is very vague, like all of their other ordinances where it comes to noise levels, pollution levels. For some reason, they're very vague when it comes to asphalt in quarries. All the research I've done is there's nothing really etched in stone. It's more of a, "Yeah, that's acceptable. That's not acceptable." And, you know, I don't, I don't think that's gonna stand up very well for our residents that all reside around this quarry.
It's, it's bigger, it's bigger than the quarry, though. It's, it's, I mean, the quarries, the quarry's a hub for truck traffic that runs in and out of there all night long. So it's not just, it's not just the quarry. It's North Main Street and South Main Street and Tarklin Hill Road and Holden Road and, you know, and, and Middle Road. It's, you know, the trucks coming out of the quarry and running all over Acushnet all night long. So I think it's bigger than what's happening in this spot. And, and I think our bylaw, our bylaw gives us the, gives us the right to regulate the hours of operation there. And, you know, I'm, I'm looking at the big pics. I attended a meeting in Fairhaven six months ago and listened to the residents down there complaining about the truck traffic coming out of the facility all night long and that, you know, the, the Jake breaks all night long. Just, just, just the sound of those vehicles at 2:00 in the morning. You know what that, you know, an empty truck sounds like, a fully loaded truck sounds like running by your house in the middle of the night? So the picture's bigger than just the sound at the quarry in the middle of the night.
I agree.
It's, it's the, it's the sprockets running out from the hub. Mr. Baroche, you had your hand up a little while ago and I.
Oh, yeah, I forgot what I was gonna say. But our bylaws do explicitly say we can control the hours of operation on the.
Yes, they do.
That's correct.
And I wanted to inform the Board of Selectmen that I also contacted the Environmental Protection Agency because in my research of the quarry, I found that in 2017, they were fined and they settled for $140,000 for discharging into the Acushnet River. So I did make the call out last Friday to the EPA in Boston and notify them of what the DEP did, the Department of Environmental Protection from Massachusetts, how they, I guess you could say, clamped down on the, on the quarry or on the movement of the asphalt plant. And I questioned the EPA on how they're testing for discharge of water into the Acushnet River now. You know, I was told, they responded to me immediately, which I found very interesting and, well, not interesting, but very good. And they told me they're gonna put somebody onto the process of inspecting the quarry and the asphalt plant for its movement closer to the tributary that feeds the Acushnet River. So I feel that we're all moving in a positive direction in this and helping the citizens of Acushnet, you know, and keeping the quarry in compliance with what they need to do. Because I feel, personally, I feel that there hasn't been that, that oversight in compliance to what they can do. And they're taking the quarry.
Agreed.
All in the ground to, now they're making it a, you know, an operation that they want to operate 24/7. And, you know, we need to have some oversight in that whole process.
Agreed. Let's, I do want to move on in the agenda unless, so this, this will remain on the agenda for the foreseeable future. Anything else on this topic before we move on? And Mr. Correa, I think is, this is the last thing we needed you for, but I just want to, you know, point out, Mr. Correa, for his work on the Soil Board Permit. Over the last two, three years that I've been on the Soil Board, we took what was a meaningless document and turned it into something that, that truly regulates what they're doing at the quarry. And that was, that was all, all through Mr. Correa's efforts, working with Woodard and Curran and other consultants to give us a, to give us a real, a real soil permit that has some, has some teeth to it now because it never did before. So thank you for that, for your work there, Mr. Correa.
Yes.
It doesn't, it doesn't mean you're done. It means you've done a good job to.
But, Mr. Chairman.
Let's, let's keep looking forward.
I'd just like to say, give kudos to, to Mr. Correa for writing that letter and notifying the quarry.
That was a well-done letter as well. That was very well done.
Last Saturday, the complaints that came from the quarry and, and us reacting on it, because I think that's the direction we need to be going in.
Yeah, it was a very well-done letter as well.
Thank you. I, I thank you very much for that. I do have one quick comment to lead you on. Although I have been a little busy lately and maybe even a little short-staffed, which we've talked about, I did manage to start to get a finale on this part-time health agent. I did speak with three individuals, four actually, one never called us back. And at this point, it's really just the board setting up the final interviews, but I believe we got, we got who we need. So it's just a matter of.
Boarding the Board of Health, setting up the final interviews.
Well, that's very good.
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Joe.
Ladies. Mr. Correa. All right, all right, next item on the agenda, Fiscal 21 Budget Articles Discussion. I think we're generally good with the articles at this point. I'd like to see, I'd like to see a final draft of them. I know we dropped a couple of them tonight, but I don't think there's anything that we needed to bring anyone in to discuss. I think we, we've been through them all. And I, you know, we killed a couple of them tonight. Ms. Hebert, go ahead, go ahead, right?
If I can, on the articles, so, you know, obviously earlier, yeah, we, we cut out two of the bylaw changes. And I've been talking to everyone, talking to Town Council because we know that there is the pending legislation that would allow us to lower the quorum if we need to in order to hold our town meeting. It's still pending, but in case it passes and we are looking to lower the quorum to try to make sure we can have a town meeting and have a budget that will pass for FY '21, the legislation would call for only keeping your operating budget and any non-controversial or federally state-mandated articles on your warrant. So the only two, I talked to Jeff Blake earlier today, even brought up, you know, we have a few capital items that we've added. And CPC, there are some articles for CPC. He said that any of those capital or CPC articles could be considered the, the operational budget. Their, their money, their financial, so they could be under the guise of budget. Again, the legislation hasn't passed yet, so it's hard to give a, a final determination. Obviously, once we get the legislation, they can interpret it. We'll get some guidance from DLS. But just from what he has heard, he said, you know what? I feel like they're, they're, especially if they're not controversial. You know, we obviously pulled all of the capital items and only put on the ones that we knew were important timewise. We had to have them on. So he feels that those two articles that you pulled earlier, the two bylaw changes that weren't mandated by the state were the only two that could be pulled or should be pulled if we wanted to have that minimal warrant. So if we needed to have a, a lower quorum, we could have it. So we.
As it stands right now, as it stands right now, we need 75 people still.
Right. And, and again, you know, they, the legislation, I think, has 10%. Some, some people have talked about 20%. You could cut it to eight people. I don't, I don't necessarily think that's what you're gonna be looking to do, but giving yourself the lower number, you know, 80 people could still show up for town meeting just because you set the quorum lower. It just helps to make sure that, again, we're not putting controversial items on the agenda. You know, we're just passing the basic things that we need for next year that we have a quorum that's low enough to have the people come in, so.
So I guess it's not up to us to deem it uncontroversial, right?
Well, again, Jeff Blake, he couldn't give a final say on anything because it's still pending. And once it comes through, we'll be able to have more clarity. But he said, looking at, he looked through our articles. He felt pretty confident in pulling those two by, bylaw changes that everything else we had on there could be justified as mandatory.
So we wouldn't have. Spending articles are okay? The capital, the capital items are okay?
Yep.
And we, we'd endorse them, I know, as a, as a, as a board, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, if, if we want to continue to, are we still talking about articles? Because I have a, I have a, something I like to bring up with the board.
Okay, we're talking articles. Let's, you can do it now.
So I don't know where they are. I don't care where they are. Julie can help me out with this because I, I remember most of it off the top of my head. So there's an article in there that's coming from Free Cash to be expended and it's pertaining to the school department's roofs renovations, maintenance for the roofs. And I think it was in the amount of 15 grand, Julie?
Yep.
So I spoke, so I spoke with Ms. Hebert. So I spoke, so I spoke with Ms. Hebert on that because 35 grands go into fire apparatuses out of our solar, solar, um, legislation that was passed some years, Mr. Young will remember it. I call it, and I reference it to it as the Gaspa Law. Um, it was something that I drafted up and we implemented in the town of Acushnet, it was the first of it in the Commonwealth. And we got about 80 grand, Ms. Hebert alluded to at our last meeting, we got about 80,000 bucks, we're using 35, but we're using 15 for the school roof renovation. And I asked Ms. Hebert today, I said, in, in that legislation, it basically states a five-year shelf life. So I asked Ms. Hebert, could we do the school roofs out of that same capital, um, outlay? And she said, yes. So if the board would like, we can not use $15,000 more of free cash and we could take it from the capital solar fund instead. They'll do in the article, just, just taking the money from a different part.
Yeah, I think you wanna, I, 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 I think we gotta take care of our roofs, I mean, I, I-
No, no, I understand that, I'm just taking it from a different part of money.
Yeah, I'm fine, why not? Why not? If we can, Ms. Hebert, if the money's there, why not?
Yep.
So the board's okay with that?
Absolutely.
I, I'd like free cash to be free cash, to stay free cash as much as we can, we've done that jobs thus far. It's only $15,000, I say only $15,000 bucks, but if it can come from our capital, um, our solar capital fund, let's do it.
I'm in agreement, I'm in agreement.
Make, wanna make that motion, Mr. Gasper?
So I'll make that motion to take the, the $15,000 for the school roof renovation and take it from the capital, the solar capital fund versus free cash.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Uh, all right, we're still on, we're still on budget. Uh, I, I thought we were largely resolved with the budget, there was a, there was a change that came through today, Ms. Hebert, with regard to something in the assessor's office, we've got a consultant, um, that apparently she couldn't cut the numbers low as she wanted to.
Yeah, so I, I sent that change, it was only a, a little while before the meeting, so, um, sorry if you didn't, if you didn't get it in time. It was just one line item that changed, it's the management consulting, um, for the assessor. So she had sent me an email when she originally gave her cut budget, um, it's line number 530300, management consulting. She had drafted to $5,000, um, but then had, um, emailed me over the weekend, um, just saying that, um, you know, she double-checked everything and noticed that, um, that amount was an, an error. She sent me a copy of the contract for next year and it, it is still $12,500, um, which is what she had originally put it up to. Um, so I did, I did update that on the spreadsheet that I have and I, I resent it over to you, but if you already had a version, you are kind of putting notes on, you can just make that change yourself, um, it should carry over, so, um-
Going from 5,000 to 10,000, was that?
Um, from 5,000 to 12,500.
It was 12,5 last, yeah, it was, the original request was 12,5.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's 7,500 bucks difference on the bottom line?
Yep.
Yeah.
And I do remember her explaining this, they had a consultant or something to do, a couple different things that they didn't have to do, that, that made the process move along quicker, I guess is the best way to describe it, so. I'm okay with it.
Yeah, me too. Mr. Gasper, you had an item.
I just, I, I wanted to be fair to Mr. Young, I mean, we, we, we were tasked with the duties, Mr. Young, to look at all of our budgets and, and say, what can we do as far as getting our budgets down as much as we can? We've been paying anywhere between 10 and 11,000 bucks for the last few years, but for a lot longer than that, but the title was a little bit different over the years because that was your position. Um, so I looked at that number and I said, realistically, you know, we're not doing special projects that I, I'm aware of and, you know, should the board be paying $11,000 to an individual where we're not really, you know, getting that bang for our buck, so-
Do you have a line item, is there a line item? Do you have the line item up here? I've got the-
Yeah, Julia probably find it before I do, it's highlighted in yellow this time.
Um, it's under selectmen.
You should have a, yeah, it's right there, it's a line item, uh, 511400.
Yep, got it.
And it's got a yellow highlight on it, it was something that was left for, for the board to discuss, but, you know, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm asking you, Mr. Young, you know, what is it that you're gonna be doing in the next year as far as that title goes for the Board of Selectmen, where we're gonna get our money's worth for that 10,000 bucks? If, you know, I, I know that, that's usually something that we would use you for grant writing and not use your previous title, then we change it to special project manager, so, I, I'll, if the chairman's okay with it, I'll give you the floor and, and, you know, tell us why it's important for us to keep the $11,000 there, please.
Yeah, just, that, that's fine, Mr. Steve, I just, I, I didn't know we were doing this tonight, so apologies for putting you on the spot like that, I didn't, I, you know, you could've come in prepared, I didn't know we were doing this, but, um, you know, go ahead, please.
I'm more than willing. Um, and, and that's a very legitimate, uh, question. So I have to go, this is a bit of a history lesson here, when, uh, when I first came to the town about 20 years ago, I came in as a special projects manager, that was just a title that was, uh, created. Uh, and I, and I stayed in that position for, uh, a few years, and then, um, when I became the planner and we looked at what my salary would be, we came up with, you know, a dollar amount, and the question at that time was, should we just, um, should we consolidate the planning board salary and the Board of Selectmen salary into one and just move it over into planning? And that would be a number. Um, and the, the, the decision back then was, you know, at the time, the relationship between the planning board and the Board of Selectmen was challenged, right? So by having the Board of Selectmen, uh, pay essentially part of the salary of the planner, enabled me to be a bridge, uh, between both the, uh, planning board and the Board of Selectmen, which I think has been sort of a secret sauce to make, uh, everything work, uh, really well between the boards for the past, um, two decades. So from my standpoint, I don't, I don't distinguish necessarily, um, the work that I do as a planner versus the special project manager on a, on a day-to-day basis. Um, I see my role as serving the planning board and also serving the Board of Selectmen, and, and there's, there's a lot of overlap. Um, examples of, you know, like a current, if you're looking for a current, um, project, which I think sort of exemplifies, um, the, the role of special project manager would be like the MVP grant, the, the municipal vulnerability protection grant. Um, you know, Julie made me aware of it. From the Board of Selectmen standpoint, I pursued it, it's a $20,000 grant, which when we're done with it, will enable us to, you know, pursue grants up to $300,000. So I've been doing, uh, you know, a lot of, I think, overlapping, uh, work for the past two decades, is, that's just the way that it, it's gone. Um, I think it works really well. Um, there have been conversations in the past, as I said, to consolidate that all under planning and, and create that sort of anomaly in the, um, in the accounting of it all, but I think it's, it works really well that you as a Board of Selectmen know that you can call me up 24/7 to seek my services, um, which has happened, you know, quite a bit, um, you know, over the years. So, um, it's just a, I, I think it's a, um, it's sort of unique to the role that I, I've played for the past 20 years, that, that my salary is sort of split 25% and 75%, or, you know, um, where it's split sort of proportionally between the Board of Selectmen and the, and the planning board. But at the end of the day, I serve at the pleasure of, you know, both boards, and, uh, you have difficult financial decisions to make, so, you know, um, I understand the position you're in, and it's a very legitimate question. That's, that's my feedback on that.
Mr. Gasper, anything? Mr. Deroche, go, your hands up.
Well, I've just listened to Mr. Young's, uh, explanation, this seems in a way similar to what we have with DPW and the water sewer, where we're paying somebody out of two different departments. And I'm not saying whether we want to agree to this or not, but it seems similar to that same process that we've established in the past, that we pay people out of two different departments, their salary is based upon different things, when it comes in the budget, we see so much from this budget and so much from that budget for someone's salary. So it's not, um, it's not unique in a way, so I think we have to decide, you know, from here on.
There are other example, I mean, you, you're right, I mean, the Concom agent receives part of her salary from the, uh, planning board and part from the Conservation Commission. Not, so I guess it's not unique in that sense, but, uh, it's an anomaly.
Mr. Gasper, anything to add? I, I've got comments-
I, I, I understand how this has transpired, I mean, Roger, you and I were back on the Finance Committee when we introduced the master plan and all that stuff, and we said it would be three years, and, you know, here we are, we, you know, how long's this position gonna be filled for? So look, I mean, is, is, I don't have a problem with you 10,000, 11,000 bucks, I think it's 11,000 this year, I don't have a problem with that, nor do I have a problem with Henry Young. What I have a problem with is, is, uh, uh, we shouldn't be paying people for something, for a service that we're just masking it and it should be in one other spot. So I like the idea that Henry does work and do work for the Board of Selectmen. Um, you know, I, I'm not saying that I want to take the $11,000 away, it was a proposed cut that we needed to think about at the time, and as long as, you know, he's proven to the Board of Selectmen that he's paying that salary and doing, giving the Board of Selectmen a service for that value of his salary, I don't have a problem with it. I think when that's diminished and we're no longer provided this, uh, uh, you know, a benefit on this end for just an amount of money that's just there, so it doesn't look like we're paying somebody extra money in a different budget, you know, I think that's some of the masking that's been going on, and I just, you know, I, I don't, I don't particularly care for it. I do like, I know that it's been mentioned over the years when Mr. Cutino was back years, you know, you want to have some control over this guy, and, you know, I think that the Board of Selectmen through the town charter, we have control over whatever affairs we want to have control over, right? We have certain powers as the Board of Selectmen, um, to have that. So Mr. Young, you know, he, he makes the comment that, you know, we, so that he'll answer the phone when we call him, I think that it's all department heads when the Board of Selectmen call you to at least acknowledge the phone call and call us back. So I just want to make sure that, you know, he's saying that he's doing the MVP grant, that's great, if we're paying $10,000 and we're getting a return on our equity of, you know, 50, 100, 200,000 dollars a year for the gentleman to be doing those kind of grants, i- it, it's well paid off, I, I, I'm, I'm for it. But, you know, if we're not doing special projects and we're not pursuing different, um, avenues to help with the cost benefit of that salary, then I, 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 I'm just, I have a problem with paying salaries for people that aren't doing a specific job, that's all. And I'm not alluding that Mr. Henry's Young is not doing his job. Um, you know, other people may want to argue that way, but I'm not gonna argue that way. I just want to make sure that, you know, maybe it's, it's beneficial for the Board of Selectmen to say, what are you doing this calendar year, fiscal year for the Board of Selectmen? What are the initiatives that y'all looking to do for the Board of Selectmen so that we can justify his salary when we go to town meeting? And I think that should be discussed way prior to town meeting so that we have a handle on what Mr. Young's gonna be doing for the board, what services are gonna be rendered from Mr. Young for his 11,000 bucks? And, you know, I, I made a case last week with, with stormwater, Mr. Young alluded to that, the stormwater age is 7,500 bucks in the planning board's budget, right? But I've also learned that certain things aren't being done for the last 17 years, that's disturbing to me, I don't, I don't think it's fair to anybody, especially our taxpayers, and I'm one.
I think the three, of four of us here are. But your, your point of checks and balances is spot on. You know, we need to, when we look at budget line items, we have to take an understanding and see what can go, come and what can go. And, um, especially in these times where we're really uncertain of what we're gonna get from the state and how our budget's gonna all play out this year. And, um, point well taken, you know, Mr. Young's explanation, I think, is also well taken, so, you know, I'm comfortable from what he had to say.
Mr. Deroche, a just concluding comment, I guess, um, and not, not directly related to this, but related to the planning position in the town of Acushnet, I've had, I've had, not with the other two selectmen, uh, but had conversations about the planning function in the town of Acushnet and whether or not it's time to talk about that being a full-time position. Just, it's just so much that we could do as a community, uh, that we, you know, should be doing as a community with a, with a full-time planner, and that's not necessarily a conversation to now, not, for now, not necessarily, it's not a conversation I've had with the other two selectmen, but it is a, it is a conversation I've had with others, and I think that, that in the, in the near term, perhaps, that's something, uh, Mr. Young, perhaps you could lead us toward that, that, you know, we should be looking at a full-time planner in the town of Acushnet, because, um, I think we're at the point where we need one. And I, I, you know, I, I had a list of things that, that we should be thinking about doing, um, as a community, that, that, you know, would be, would be part of the role of a full-time planner. So not necessarily directly related to this, but, um, it's possible we, we should be spending more on the, on the planner's role, uh, and, and will lead to in the future, so. Um, just, just leave it there. And anything else on this topic, uh, Mr. Gasper, Mr. Deroche?
I just think that based on the comments that you just made, I'd real have to see some real evidence behind, you know, a full-time versus a part-time, I think they can, the argument could be made that there's certain full-time positions that should be part-time positions, and, you know-
We're not, we're not, we don't need to do, we don't need to do it now, sir.
A plant, well, a, a planner, you know, a plan is only as good as how much space you have to develop, right? So I think that's the first step.
Well, I mean, there's all, there's all kinds of things, there's paper streets projects, there's, I've got a, I've got a list, there's all kinds of things we could, we could put on the planner's office to, to deal with, so, um, and I, I mean, I've got, I can share some things with you, Mr. Gasper, that I've got, that things, things we should, we should think about, but-
Sure.
You know, certainly not, not proposing that, not adding another $50,000 to the budget tonight, but, um, I, I want to go to, uh, to Mrs. Labonte, who's been sitting patiently, who's got another item on the agenda here tonight, um, and that's the, uh, the election warrant, I think you're just looking for approval of that, uh, is that correct, Mrs. Labonte?
That's it, just so I can get it posted.
Is there, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I, I had to wait until your last meeting when you had determined the, the time, um, from 10 to 2 for the election on the 27th. So I just need strictly your, uh, signature and all of them so we can get those posted.
Signatures, we don't do those anymore. Signatures, what's that? All right, yeah, um, is there a motion to, do you need a motion to approve the warrant? Or do you just need, yeah, so-
Yes.
Could I get a motion to the, to approve the election warrant as presented?
So moved.
And I will second that motion.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Really need signatures, huh? How are we gonna do that?
I do, I'm sorry.
Can we scan, doesn't need to be wet ink, right? Could we scan it around?
Actually, I did talk with Lisa about this, I know Selectmen, um, Gaspa is there now, um, Selectmen Deroche does go in quite frequently, and then we can use your stamp if you will authorize-
I made my stamp go away, we destroyed my stamp, Roger.
I see you lead to saying no, wait.
Oh, it's gone.
Roger, Roger doesn't believe in signature stamps.
Okay.
I can, I can get there, if I can get there if needed to sign, to sign. I haven't been in town hall in, in six weeks, probably.
Okay, if not, as long as I have the two, two signatures, that's fine.
Or scan it, scan it to me, I'll scan it back, whatever you want to do.
Okay.
We can certainly get a signature on it.
This, this Labonte, it's not just one copy though, isn't it, multiple?
13 copies.
Correct. So I can have 13 copies in front of me tonight, so I can't sign them tonight. I'll come back and do it, though.
No, Kevin, you signed them last week.
Oh, that's right, I'm all set signing that stuff. I remember, yeah, Lisa's right, I signed a bunch of copies of something last week.
Lisa, Lisa.
Did I sign, did I sign them last week? I don't, I did? So we're all set, they're all signed.
Kevin, you're all set. So it's all set.
We'll have the police take them over to Roger's house.
That'd be good.
Okay, if I can just say one last thing, um, because we have reduced the number of hours for the election from 10 to 2 on the Saturday, uh, we are doing early voting, which I have spoken about previously, and I want to let everyone know that, um, early voting applications can be found on our website, they can be printed off, signed and sent in qua's. do not accept emails or scanned copies of those. We do need to have a wet signature. So, my recommendation is to drop it in the pay, the applications in the payment Dropbox, or pop it in the mail. As soon as we receive it, we will then mail out the early voting application to the individual. Yes.
Pam, I missed the beginning of that. You said to start the process, the applicant has to...
We need an application on file before we can send out a ballot to the individual.
All right.
The applications can be found on our website, or they can certainly call into the office, and we can mail them out as well.
Very good. Thank you.
And if they drop them in the payment Dropbox, we send them right out immediately, or they can mail them back to us. And we just need to have those back before the close of polls, which in this particular case would be 2:00 PM on the 27th.
Very good.
Okay. And that's all I have.
Okay, Ms. Labonte, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Young, you're all set as well, unless you want to, you're welcome to hang around, but I'll give you the opportunity to escape if you want.
Thank you.
Thanks, Henry.
Thank you, Henry.
All right. So, the, we've got the annual appointment approvals.
I need that.
Say it again?
I said, who's going to read that?
Would you like to, Ms. Leonard?
I'll read it if you want.
The only, why don't we, we can, all right, we've got, wow, we've got, well, this isn't bad. So, I'll tell you what, I'll start, I'll start, and then, we have two pages, three pages. I'll take the, I'll take the first page.
But I do have a question about the highlighted.
Yeah, I wanted to talk about that, too.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion there?
Yeah.
That there are some committees that I'm on, that I think you hold deciding, who gets on those, until my successor is seated, maybe decide who gets, gets the slots that I'm on, until you've got a third Selectman.
So, we don't need to vote on those today?
And then I also, I also saw three names in the Finance Committee. Do I assume those people aren't coming back?
Oh, no. We only vote on those after town meeting. Me and Julie talked about that today.
So, we're not doing this at all?
The bylaws, the bylaws state that we don't vote, find that you can't, or the state law states you can't vote Finance Committee members until after town meeting.
Understood.
So, should we do any of this tonight?
Yeah, yeah. All the other ones have to be done. Other than, other than that, the committees can't hold public hearings, Roger.
Okay. Well, we haven't had our town meeting, we haven't had our town election, so it just feels like everything's...
Yeah, but we do, we do, we do the appointments, we do the appointments around this time of the year. At least, I'll tell you, there's a certain date, I don't know, May something. We're probably behind, actually. It feels like I'm, we're behind on this already by a month or two.
Okay. And I, again, I will skip the Finance Committee, we'll skip the, I mean, if the two of you, if the two of you want to appoint people in my, you know, you want to take one of the roles, that's fine, but I would suggest you defer until you've got a third Selectman. So, I'll start on page one. American Disabilities Act Coordinator, James Merritt; Animal Control Officer Inspector Rebecca Tomlinson; Animal Control Officer Inspector and Assistant Anne Estabrook; Town Accountant Melissa Ford; Board of Appeals Robert Brown; Bylaw Review Committee, all of these are Bylaw Review Committee; Mark LaPlante; The Town Clerk Pamela Labonte; Raymond LeBlanc; Carol Westgate; John Hawcroft does an alternate; and James Merritt is the Building Inspector on the Bylaw Review Committee. And there is a Selectman slot that I currently hold. And the last name for the Bylaw Review Committee is Norville Stanley. Conservation Commission Ryan Rosendies and Richard Pimentel; Council on Aging Director is Heather Sylvia; Cultural Council, two names, Amanda Baptiste and Lisa Leonard; Deputy Building Inspector is Nathan Darling; Deputy Wire Inspector, three names, Thomas DiCosta, Frank Knox, and Victor Ferrera; Election Inspector, there's a lot of them. I'm just, all of these names are Election Inspectors until I stop. Diane Ferrera, Carolyn Fortin, Catherine Audette, Linda Blaze, Christine Brown, Andrea Corey, Diana Kudo, Margaret Fernandez, Carolyn Fortin, Russell Goyette, Carol Bravanas, Paulette Hudson, Beth Kalanich, Lexi Labonte, Christine Kraus, Anna Labrote, Title of Election Inspector Clerk Mary LeBeau, Colleen Lincoln, and Margaret Motta. Let me finish the Election Inspectors. Susan Perry, Everett Phila Junior, Robert Raymond, Priscilla Santos, Suzanne Sunick, Lexi Ann Labonte, I think I read that one. Arlene Todd. Yeah, these are all elections, okay. Arlene Todd, Frances Model, Joyce Wiley, Maria Moore, and inspectors. So, we'll go EMA Director, Mr. Gaspar.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just go back to one of your appointments, you, you've done, you've done a town accountant, but officially, we haven't signed the contract, so.
Yeah, agreed. What, what do we do with that?
Leave it alone.
Town accountant, yeah. All right. So, let's, let's table that one for now. We've got a contract for discussion.
Correct.
So, start with...
EMA Director Gerald Bergeron, Energy Committee, Merrill Lee Kelly, James Merritt, Henry Young, Julie Hebert; Enforcement Agent for the Board of Selectmen is James Merritt; Finance Boris Warden Kevin Gallagher; Golf Management Operational Committee John Aberry Junior, Robert Ferrera, David Flynn, Manuel Gulat, Edward Isaac; Heron Warden Assistant Scott Pedengio, sorry if I mispronounced. Pedegio. Inspector of Garages Kevin Gallagher; Insurance Advisory Committee Retiree Doesney, Michael Poitras; Moth Superintendent Inspector and Pest Control Dan Minad; Open Space Committee Max Inarizio, Merrill Lee Kelly, Robert Roach Jr.; Parking Clerk Julie Hebert; Phase Two Stormwater Committee Max Inarizio, Merrill Lee Kelly, James Merritt, Dan Minad, James Merritt; Portable Sign Committee James Merritt; Safety Committee Christopher Richmond, Joseph Correa, Kevin Gallagher, Danielle, Dan Minad, James Merritt, and Julie Hebert. You want me to keep going?
Mr. DeRoche should take, Mr. DeRoche should take.
Now I know who to call about my moth problems.
Right. I'm thinking, I know where to get a parking ticket fixed now. All right.
Stealer of Weights and Measure Theodore Machado; Shellfish Warden Harbor Master Robert Maderas; Soil Conservation Board Water Health Robert Maderas; Soil Conservation Board Planning Board Max Inarizio; Soil Conservation Board Conservation Merrill Lee Kelly; Soil Conservation Board DPW Daniel Minad; Soil Conservation Board Fire Kevin Gallagher; Soil Conservation Board Town Administrator Julie Hebert; Special Police Officer for New Bedford Water Works Dan Minad; Street Naming Committee Christopher Richmond; Street Naming Committee Kevin Gallagher; Tax Title Custodian Kathy Mueller; Veterans Agent Ronald Comia; and where Tilcon Capaldi, PJ Keating, the following Nancy Franco, Bruce Miranda, Audio Moco, Jen Olivera, Bryant Ribio, Sean Fornia, Jonathan Souza.
Is there a motion to approve all of the names that have been read?
So moved.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. So, Serpide MPO self-nomination. So, this is Serpide needs somebody, is it for their board, that they're looking for someone from the Town of Cushing? And if any of us are interested to serve on the Serpide Board?
Chairman, I saw that you can return those forms as late as June 4th at 5:00 PM.
Okay, so we've got time.
From Cushing has ever responded.
Nobody from Cushing, so they, they used to, they used to not...
Because Henry, Henry and Merrill Lee are on their board, so usually the Selectmen...
So, we're well represented already. I think that was my memory from the last time we had this discussion. I, I suspect there's a lot of heavy lifting there, gentlemen, so your call. I'm not eligible, unfortunately, because I would, I would do it in a heartbeat.
Well, I still have time to consider.
Okay, all right. So, if you'd like to self-nominate, you've got the form, you can self-nominate. Department of Public Works looking for approval to do some road, to do a road drainage project on Mendel Road.
Mr. Chairman, that, that, we need Mr. Minad to come in and start giving us updates on what, we, we've got a lot of money that's spent on piping over there. You seen all that black pipe down at the town garage? And we don't know what's going on anymore with these expenditures. I'd like Mr. Minad to come in and explain this drainage that we're doing on Mendel Road. We started with a very small phase, leading up to a much bigger phase, and how much money we're going to be spending, kind of like the good old days, know what we're spending money on. We don't know what's been going on out there. We haven't had an update on Mendel Road drainage in, I don't know how many years. I, I'd like Mr. Minad to come in and start telling us what's going on, and what projects he's doing, and where this money's going, before we just keep approving money and expenditures out of that article. He's looking to fund this out of that article from last year, 160 grand now has gone from.
Yeah, I don't, I don't object necessarily to him, of him, I mean, this feels to be appropriate use of the funds. It, I don't disagree that he, it would be helpful to have him here to talk about what he's doing. I don't disagree with the project. I suspect it's a, it's a, it's a project that needs doing. He wouldn't have asked for it otherwise, but, you know, I don't disagree with the, with the request that he should be here to talk about what he's doing.
The scope of the project, whoa, and that's the problem. We don't know when, where's the end? That's what I, I want to know. How much money have we spent, and how much more money are we going to spend? Don't come and ask for 5, 10,000 bucks, and then back in another two weeks and asking for another 10 grand for the same project. The Board of Selectmen should really know what's happening in the Town of Cushing. And, and I, I've never been updated on Mendel Road project, what's going to be done, how much of it's going to take place. I've never seen anything, never.
Could we bring him in next week, Ms. Hebert, to put this on the agenda, kick it out till next week? We'll bring him back? That's a fair, fair request.
Just to say, just to, on the record, I concur with both of you. Thank you.
Town Administrators Report, anything, Ms. Hebert?
I have nothing right now.
Okay. We've done a lot, so. Selectment Announcements, anything?
Throw your trash bags in the trash. That's it.
I keep missing, because of COVID-19, I apologized to all the moms out there. I missed Mother's Day, wishing everybody happy Mother's Day. I missed, I didn't wish everybody a happy, safe Memorial Day weekend, so I apologize for that. COVID-19's got us all screwed up, and not thinking straight by the calendar anymore. Every day seems to be the same day for me. And I apologize for not wishing all the moms out there happy Mother's Day. But, if there's anybody out there, and young adults having graduations, that are graduating this year, congratulations to the class of 2020. No matter what school you're graduating from, it's a huge step in society. Hopefully, you contribute to society in a good, fair way. Congratulations. And, again, maybe there'll come a time where you'll all be able to celebrate your, your graduation at a better time than right now is for all you young folks out there. But again, congratulations to the class of 2020.
And I must say, I did hear from the Fire Department that we are having a special ceremony for our graduates, graduates, graduates. On May 31st, I believe. Julie, do you know that?
I forget the date now. I think that sounds right, yeah.
Right. There's going to be a parade through town. People are meeting graduates from high schools in the Town of Cushing, a meeting at the Ford Middle School, Elementary School area, and gonna have a procession through town escorted by the police and fire department.
Next meeting, we had one potentially for June 2nd. Mr. DeRoche told me he was not going to be able to make that. So, could I suggest that we cancel that meeting? And instead, we've got a meeting, we've got the PJ Keating hearing scheduled for June 9th. If we want to post a meeting for just prior to that, we could do that at 5:00 that night. Or we could do something prior, whatever, whatever the group feels. We're in good shape, I think, with the budget and with the articles. Any comments?
With my schedule, the 9th, I could do. Anything earlier, I wouldn't be able to commit to.
We have a public hearing on the night, gentlemen.
Have a public hearing on the 9th at 6:00. Do you want to try to meet at 5:00 before that? Why don't we post a meeting for 5:00?
What are we doing, what are we doing at this June 9th meeting before this?
Well, the PJ, the PJ Keating hearing is at 6:00.
What do you want to do?
I don't have an agenda. I'm just, I'm just, it's a placeholder for anything we need to do for, it's two weeks out. It's a placeholder. Because other than that, our next meeting is the week after.
The notes that I have from tonight, under Old Business, that we would keep, number one, the COVID updates, reopening plans, because I'll be working on the reopening plan for the town. And I'm guessing you're still going to want to keep on the Soil Board permit. I think we said that under Old Business. And then we just said DPW, the Mendel Road Drainage, to have Dan come. So, that, that's all I have right now. That would be on the agenda. If you think that that would be good for an hour, we could do that before the PJ Keating hearing.
I don't know, I don't know how long we're going to need to do this plan for reopening town hall. I don't, I hate to wait until the 9th to talk about it, and then don't do it till the following week. Now you're out until the middle, middle of June. So, Julie, if you can get something to the Board via email, only that topic, and not 9 million attachments and PDF files that are 30,000 pages long, for our next meeting, give us a reopening of town hall, what it looks like at Department. You've already given us a, you know, something with Library and Council on Age. And again, June 8th, for those two guys, I don't have a problem waiting for them guys, because their criteria, it looks like you're going to spend more money sanitizing and everything else before you get anything even accomplished. We could talk about that during the week with Ms. Hebert as individuals, but I think we need to get something. And maybe we can just do a quick meeting to vote on a decision of reopening town hall in between now and then.
I could accommodate sometime a short meeting, if we wanted to just limit it to opening town hall. You know, before, before the 9th.
Yeah.
I could accommodate that. But having another, yeah, I could accommodate that.
Yeah, like a, like a 15, 20-minute discussion on reopen. I think that's all we need, if we all get the review or plan.
And we could post that with 48 hours' notice.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we get the plan a week ahead of time, you know, five, six days, four, five, six days, give us some time to look at this thing and digest it, and figure out what makes sense and what doesn't. And then the Board through the chairman, and we, we make a decision, hey, let's post a meeting, and let's do a quick Zoom meeting, and we can bang it out, and just make a motion to approve, and that's it. We're done, because we'll work out the issues with Ms. Hebert prior to the meeting, instead of doing it here.
That's some, somewhere between now and the 9th. We'll, we'll do that as needed. Let's also post one for the 9th at 5:00, as, you know, as needed. If we don't need it, we won't meet, we'll take it down. But, let's, let's plan on, let's plan on doing that. So, those would be the next, next meeting schedule. We've got an executive session on the, on the agenda. Are we prepared to do that? We were going to get some comparative salary information. I've not seen any of that.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I started reaching out to communities on Thursday morning via phone calls and, and emails. I've only gotten a few back. I've been in discussion with Ms. Hebert. She actually volunteered to do a few communities along with me. And I said, yeah, that'd be great if you could do that. I spoke with Ms. Hebert today. Nobody's gone back to her. I told her last week, it's going to be tough now, and nobody responded within the first 24 hours. We're already talking Friday. At the Friday morning, at that point, I said, I forgot this was Memorial Day weekend. Most people are taking their vacation, probably banging Thursday, Friday last week, and maybe all of this week, or maybe just today of this week. So, I don't have nothing new to bring to the table as far as that discovery goes for a salary, so.
Let's, let's, if we could, let's try to gather that, and we can distribute that at any point. Let's try to gather that information and get it around.
As soon as I, I got a couple of them.
Yeah, good.
As soon as I get it. Yep.
We wanted to know we're interested and supportive.
I'm going to, absolutely. I'm going to put it, I'll put it in detail with Ms. Hebert. Her and I will work together with whatever communities we get correspondence from. We'll put it together, and we'll send it on a, an analysis of where it comes in at, and for the Board to review it, and for discussion at an upcoming meeting.
Excellent, excellent.
Anything else, or is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And I'll second that.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, hold on, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. We're in the discussion of our motion to adjourn, but go ahead.
So, Mr. Goller, he's been, he's been talking to me for the last two or three weeks, and he's looking to get some authorization for the Cable Committee to dispose of obsolete equipment from the cable. I mean, he's got a, this, if you, I think he said he would talk to both of you two gentlemen.
Yeah, I spoke with him, yeah.
I mean, this...
I referred him to Ms. Hebert, and told, you know, she knows how to dispose of surplus town property. And I told her, told him to run it through her, and we'll, you know, I mean, we've seen that we voted on the process. So, I think if he just talks to Ms. Hebert, we can get rid of that stuff.
Yeah, I don't know.
I endorse what he's asking, I endorse what he's asking to do. It's just, talk to Ms. Hebert, say, this is what I want to get rid of, and we'll figure out whether we just put it in the dumpster, or we gotta, we gotta try to sell it. But, you know, I'm, I'm in agreement in each, let's get rid of it.
I mean, if, if you need a VCR from the 80s, we got them.
So we get 8-track tape players, and there's my understanding.
If, I know we usually do certain things, some, you know, a surplus item, you have to declare it as surplus items. I don't know if a VCR or a little hand or a big old camera from the 80s. I know that Mr. Goller and Nick, the kid, he was, he was telling us that maybe Old Colony could use some of this electronic equipment for the electronics class. I can surely reach out to the Superintendent Aaron Polanski there, I have his phone number. I, I'm in contact with him at least once every quarter of the year. So I can touch base with him and see if it's something that may be the electronics class, but if you know of any criteria that we cannot dispose of that camera stuff and we have to do it a certain way, can you just let me know that? Because, I, I mean, I don't want to touch base with Aaron from this, from Old Colony and, or even New Bedford Volk and say, hey, I got a bunch of old equipment, you guys want to play around in your electronics class with it?
We don't care if it ever.
Yeah, we don't, we don't care if it ever comes back and it works again, you guys do whatever you want, but I just don't want somebody, you know, filing a grievance because we didn't go through the proper channels of disposing surplus equipment.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, typically you do, you have to, you have to declare it, you have to vote to declare it surplus equipment, and again, typically you would post it and get the best price you can that's reasonable for it, but if you also want to donate it, you're more than welcome to donate it. But I, my understanding is for, at first you would have to declare it a surplus property.
Well, we do that, we can declare it as no value, right?
Yeah.